I'd like to call this January 19th, 2017, meeting of the Strongsville Board of Education to order. George, can you take role?
Sure.
Colonel Evans?
Here.
Mr. Groszan?
Here.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mr. Neso?
Mr. Neso is not present tonight. He is in Washington DC to watch President Trump during the inauguration and he promised to take the cause of Ohio school finance to the president if he has the opportunity. And the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point on our agenda, we review our district goals. We have three district goals: financial prudence, student achievement and growth, and community engagement. We always remind ourselves of our goals and how all of them must remain in balance for us to accomplish our objectives. And I now turn it over to Mr. Raiba for recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. We have a series of recognitions that we're excited to share tonight. We are going to go a little out of order because we have some prior commitments from some of the folks that are here, so we are going to go to number six, which we're going to turn it over to Mr. Faust, who's going to do a presentation in terms of the Giving Tuesday donation to the Strongsville Food Bank. So, Dan, when you're ready.
Good evening. Thank you very much. If I could have Laura and Cassie and Chef Mike up here with me, please. This past holiday season, there were many examples of Strongsville students and staff making a difference in our community. Tonight, I'm proud to recognize one of the programs in which our district had the opportunity to give back. Joining me is Laura Howson, representing the Strongsville Food Bank, Cassie Weber, representing the Strongsville Rotary, and Chef Mike from Chartwells. As part of the global initiative Giving Tuesday, which occurs on the Tuesday after Thanksgiving, Chartwells and Strongsville schools teamed up to benefit the Strongsville Food Bank and its Power Pack program, which our Strongsville Rotary helps support. On Tuesday, November 29th of last year, a portion of the proceeds of sales of individual slices of pizza in our schools went toward this very meaningful program. Nearly 1,300 pizza slices were sold on that Tuesday, and it is my pleasure to present a check for $500 to the Strongsville Food Bank. Thank you to Chartwells and Strongsville Rotary, and thank you to the many Strongsville students and staff who participated in Giving Tuesday and took part in this donation to the Strongsville Food Bank. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank you guys really quickly for partnering with the food bank and with the Rotary Club for this. What this Power Pack, just in case anybody isn't aware of what we're doing, we're sending backpacks of food home for kids who may not have a warm meal on the weekends. So, with this money, you know, we're able to continue on that program. We're currently doing that in two of our elementary schools, and we're hoping throughout the next couple of years to do it in all of our schools. So, thank you, thank you very much.
On behalf of the Strongsville Rotary Club, thank you so much for supporting this program. I believe wholeheartedly in this. It wouldn't have started if Kelly and I didn't have a conversation about this program, so thank you so much. And this donation absolutely helps 100%, and it goes to these kids who do go home hungry, believe it or not, in Strongsville from Friday to Monday when they, the first thing that they walk into the door on Monday. So, thank you so much.
Come on up and...
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're fine.
See you tomorrow morning.
See you hungry.
Thank you so very much.
Thanks.
Yeah, true.
This was the first year we participated in this endeavor and thrilled that we could have this money go to such an outstanding cause. What we'd like to do is go back into the agenda, and this January 2017, or January across the state of Ohio, is Ohio School Board Recognition Month. And as I've said many times, we're blessed to have a dedicated and outstanding board, and we value truly what you do on a daily basis. And we all are here for different reasons, but the one common thread between all of us is that we're here to help provide a better education, a better school district, and a better future for our students. So, as we recognize you and the impact that each of you as a board member have had on the future of our district, we thought it best to hear it from our kids and your decisions and your leadership and how it's impacted them. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Faust, who's going to help lead the endeavor to share what your leadership has meant to our school district.
Hi, my name is Garrett Tabato, and I was a senior captain on the 2016 Strongsville Mustang football team. And one of the biggest renovations to our school this year was a new turf field at Pecatan Stadium, and that's been a long-awaited goal that's been very exciting to all of us. The importance of the turf field to our football team is it allows us to practice on a playing surface that simulates the kind of field that we would play on during a game because all of our opponents in the GCC have turf fields and most of our out-of-conference games do as well. I wish all of you could have been there in the mornings in June and July and saw the look on our faces as all of the football players anxiously waited and watched as the field, as the turf field came closer and closer to its final goal. As a football player, I know many other athletes such as lacrosse players, soccer players, and even students in PE classes, and all of them were amazed and proud of the versatility that the field could bring to our school. It truly is an incredible renovation because it doesn't only benefit the athletes at our school, but also the city as a whole, because many events in Strongsville are held at Pecatan Stadium, such as Relay for Life and different events through Team Strongsville. Unfortunately, he can't be here tonight, but on behalf of all the athletes at Strongsville High School, I want to thank Mr. Neso for his hard work and dedication bringing a great new turf field to Strongsville High School.
All right. My name is Chris Ritz. I'm a senior at Strongsville High School, and along with Strongsville High School, I'm also in a players' program, chef's training program. I'm just talking here to talk about the players and how big of an opportunity it is for us as students at Strongsville, how it helps us very much. I am in chef's training program. I'm on the culinary team where we went to Nationals and we placed first. And along with that, I won scholarships, which for me is going to pay for almost half of my college tuition, which is pretty big for me, including other people on the team. And this players for us students is a big opportunity because it prepares us for the careers onward after high school, and it's just the biggest thing we could have ever had at Strongsville. I would like to thank Mr. Miko for having us being connected to players from Strongsville. Along with me, every other student's players, we thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, board, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Clay Laracy. I am a junior at Strongsville High School. I play hockey and lacrosse, but one of my favorite things about the school is the Air Force Junior ROTC program Colonel Evans provided us this year. I plan to participate in college ROTC as well and hope to make a career in the Air Force. I love learning about aviation history and leadership, participating in drill, wearing the uniform, representing my school as long as my country. I want to thank Colonel Duke Evans for his efforts to bring this great program to Strongsville High School and bringing in Lieutenant Colonel, Chief, Lieutenant Colonel Kompassky and Chief Brad Buning. I've heard Colonel Evans speak a couple of times during Career Day at our high school. I have attended that two years in a row, and I look forward to hearing him speak multiple more times. Colonel Evans has shown a great interest in our program. He also came to speak during Veterans Day at our JROTC event. I know we will not have a JROTC program without Colonel Evans's support. I would like to thank him from the bottom of my heart. I know this is a great program, and I can't wait to see many more students come in through the following years.
Hi, my name is Maureen Tanner, and I'm an eighth grader at Strongsville Middle School. I'm here to thank Mr. Groszan for everything that he's done so that we could have this new middle school. After I was a seventh grader at Albion and a lot of my friends went to Center, I have perspective of both the old schools and the new school. I can say that one of my favorite things about the new school is how bright it is on the inside, because after going to Albion, I realized how dark it was, and most of my classrooms didn't even have windows in them. So, now coming to the new school, it's really refreshing to come into such a bright, open building and to have so much natural light. And I also think that having teams in the school creates a community, a sense of community that such a large school wouldn't have otherwise. For these reasons and so many more, I'd like to say thanks to Mr. Groszan and that the staff and students in Strongsville Middle School strongly appreciate everything you've done.
Good evening. My name is Julia Faust, and I am a senior at Strongsville High School. Especially during this time, as I begin to look back on my high school career, I feel that challenging myself in the many advanced placement classes I've completed has made me the person that I am today and has prepared me to be the student that I will become in the next step of my academic career at college. Academic placement classes have pushed me to think differently, stretched my comfort zone, and given me an educational foundation to succeed at the next level. As a matter of fact, having the opportunity to engage in many advanced placement classes has given me the confidence and breadth of knowledge to apply to a few Ivy League schools. Although I will not know until the end of March whether or not I was accepted, I am excited to have had the opportunity to have a competitive application because of the courses that I have taken at Strongsville High School. The teachers who have been a part of these advanced placement classes have been great mentors to me, and I cannot thank them enough for the impact that they have had, not only on my academic career, but on the growth and development as a person. Tonight, I would like to also thank Strongsville Board of Education member Mrs. Ludwig for her continued efforts in shaping and fostering the solid curriculum in our school district. I'm confident in knowing that I speak for many students, that a Strongsville education has prepared us to go after our next set of academic goals. Thank you so much.
And if we can all give a round of applause to our board members for all the work that they do each and every day. I believe we do have a little token of our appreciation from the students to bring up to each of the board members.
Food?
It is food. It is food.
I don't want to eat it. I have to take a picture. I'll find it to bear off.
I will, I will. Oh, my gosh, this is going well. Congratulations.
Do I get to eat this during the meeting?
You can eat whatever you want.
Absolutely.
Mr. Neso did not get a cookie, let's be clear. I will take care of his. I just have to say, I know we're here to recognize our board members for their well-deserved efforts, but our students, how phenomenal are they to get up and just do such a great job sharing their thoughts and what our school district means to them. So, I know they have all busy schedules, so I appreciate them taking time to be here to honor you tonight.
Cameron, I just want to make a few quick comments on behalf of all of us as board members, but obviously this took some planning and it took some thought, and it is very much appreciated.
Very much.
Of all the different school board recognitions, this one has to top the list. Carl is getting, watching the president be inaugurated, but I'm confident we made the better choice because this was really very special, so it's very appreciated. And as always, the thing that I'm always struck by is how well they speak, what a good job they do representing us, and what a good example they are for the other students, the younger students, and what they can aspire to. So, thank you again to all the students for doing a great job.
At this time, Mr. Neso, or Mr. Neso, sorry, have it. Mr. Miko, I am going to go to the podium, and I'd ask our treasurer, George Agnastu, and our treasurer's department to meet me at the podium as well. Yes, that means all of you. So, as we've shared recently, we are proud to recognize George, our treasurer, and his entire department for recently being recognized with the Association of School Business Officials International Award, Meritorious Budget Award, for his excellence in budget presentation during the 2016-17 school year. I know this sounds official, but seriously, this is the book that he created to look at our budget, and it's not only just a great award to recognize all of his efforts and the excellence in school budgeting, but it truly is a useful document in our decision-making as a district. And I am also going to embarrass his wife. His wife is back there, Katina, and I'd like to recognize Katina because George did not see her for about three months as he was putting this together, and as you see, they have a young family, and she took the load of the work there for those few months. But just to put it in perspective, there's only two other school districts in the entire state of Ohio that go to this level to ensure that the budget and the forecasting is at the level that George and his department did. So, on behalf of our district and the board, thank you for all of your efforts. Thank you, George, for your leadership and all of the support that the department gives, and I know George has a few words as well.
Cameron, real quick, how many pages are in that book?
George, you know, don't you? Let's see, 460.
Thank you very much.
Board members, Cameron, Jenny, thank you again for this recognition. This has been a goal of mine to do for several years, but finally had the opportunity to do it once I became the treasurer here. It does meet one of our goals of financial prudence. It increases our financial transparency to the community, and then also solidifies our financial practices. And I also want to recognize my staff who do a wonderful job on a day-to-day basis enforcing our policies and making sure that we're compliant, and without the hard work that they do, we wouldn't be able to apply for things like this and be able to move the district forward. So, just want to introduce who's here. Don Evangelista, my executive secretary, Ruth Ann Frantzen, coordinator of payroll and benefits, Rob Showalter, assistant treasurer, Judy Jarkago, accounts payable, and Karen Rich, accounts payable. And then we also have John Kahuth, payroll, who couldn't be here tonight. So, thank you again.
I just want to compliment George again.
We tease, we joke about that book, but that book is invaluable. There are so many times where in the past where we've had to try to make a decision and we ask, you know, what's the history, what's the numbers before, what's happened for the last 10 years? And now we don't have to ask, and George doesn't have to dig it up or try to find it or generate a report. We have a book with all the historical information in it, and it really is quite a good accomplishment. I do want to compliment George on another thing. He does bring leadership to the department that we haven't had in the district in such a way in a long time, at least not in my history. But again, leadership, and it's also, he displayed that it's a team. So, we want to thank everyone for all their hard work. I'm very fond of saying it, and I truly do mean it. We are very proud of you, and we're very proud of your department. So, thank you and congratulations.
Our final recognition for tonight, I'm going to turn it over to Mark Smithberger, principal of Strongsville High School, to recognize Ava. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Raiba, and thank you, School Board, for having us here this evening. I was thinking about the January being school month. You guys get a whole month. Today, popcorn gets only one day, so you're 30 times better than popcorn, apparently. So, but in all seriousness, thank you for your guys' work for the district. Your guys' leadership and what you guys do at a board level allow us to support kids and support our staff, so thank you. We really do appreciate it. So, on behalf of the high school and us and the students and staff there, thank you so much. I'm here tonight to recognize Ava Pate, high school junior. Ava, come on up, please. Ava is a superstar, and sometimes we throw that term around, and that really may not be a true statement. Ava is a superstar. So, I want to give you a little bit of her background. Certainly, if you have the board agenda, you know that she was a 2016 bronze medalist for pure gold pattern, or pre-gold pattern dance. What that means, because most of us aren't familiar with ice dance all that much, I should speak for myself, I'm not familiar with ice dance, that is the second highest-ranked division in all of ice dancing, so she is a bronze medalist. Give her a round of applause for that. That is her fourth national medal she's won. So, she's won different divisions. In 2014, she was a national champion in another division. She has since moved on to the highest division of ice dance. She is now a senior solo ice dancer. That is the highest level you can get to. At this point, her mother told me she's looking for a dancing partner. She's had some people in Eastern Europe contact her, correct?
Yeah.
They'd be interested in having her partner. She doesn't want to leave the country at this point, though. So, she prefers to have someone in the Detroit area. Yes, we're looking for a Detroit partner, potentially. And that would allow her, for that point, to start like the pre-Olympic training program, national program, which is really what, that's her aspiration, and she's aspiring to. So, I asked her mother, how does one begin this journey and this path? Well, for Ava, it started at age five. She started skating, from then on competing. At this point, she trains at Strongsville. She has a coach here, and she trains multiple days a week in Michigan outside of Detroit. So, a few times a week, they hop in the car, drive to Detroit, train for a few hours, and come back home. It is a huge commitment. She trains about 20 hours a week, besides a full-time student and everything a high school teenager would have going on. Her coach in Michigan, it's a unique situation, and it's kind of gave me a little perspective of how good Ava really is, only coaches national and Olympic team members, other than one person on her coaching roster, and she's right here tonight. So, her coach takes a special interest in her and took her on because they understand the kind of talent and drive and desire she has to really be an Olympic champion someday. So, this is just one of Ava's many awards she's gotten, and certainly we think there'll be many awards in the future to come. So, please join me in congratulating Ava on the awesome job and give her a round of applause here.
Ava, well, congratulations on that phenomenal accomplishment. My last skating experience was eighth grade, going around a circle at the Garfield Heights Rec Center, and I didn't do very well at that. So, we're just so proud of you and the efforts that you've done, and thank you for representing your district so well. So, congratulations. With that, Mr. Neso, I'm, man, I'll get her, it's Miko, it's Miko. I know you wanted to go to public comment.
Yeah, we're going to adjust the order one more time, and we'll go to public comment. I have one slip before me. Mr. Lorenzo Ritson.
Hi, how's it going? My name is Lorenzo Ritson. I live here in Strongsville, but I'm a senior at St. Edward High School. I want to take this moment to tell you about my experiences past holiday season when I was blessed to have the chance to travel to a small village called San Antonio in the Central American country of Belize. This was an opportunity of a lifetime. The trip with Global Public Service Academies, GPSA, which is affiliated with Duke University, was a humbling and life-altering adventure that I'll never forget. This GPSA trip allows high school students to explore a different culture while gaining hands-on experience in the healthcare field versus a more simple, local, shadowing day. As a brief synopsis of my trip, I left early in the morning of Sunday, December 11th, and returned on Saturday, December 24th. I was one of three students from St. Edward, and we were joined in-country by a fourth student, a female from Brazil. We spent several hours each day in the community center where we learned about a variety of healthcare topics taught by volunteer medical fellows from Duke University as well as Johns Hopkins University. Training included how to perform medical screenings such as blood pressure, pulse, respiratory rate, blood glucose, and BMI. We also learned about the basic essentials of patient care, hypertension, diabetes, maternal fetal health, as well as hand and oral hygiene. Each morning, we would walk for miles upon miles in blistering heat to visit people in their homes in the neighboring villages and perform screenings. In addition, we spent time in the local schools educating the students on the importance of a healthy diet, maintaining a healthy body weight, and hygiene. I was fortunate to stay with a wonderful host family who was so gracious and opened their home for several of us to stay for 12 days. Miss Dorita, Mr. Mai, and Chelsea, their three-year-old daughter, were very kind and treated me like one of their own. The food was delicious, authentic, and extremely fresh. Miss Dorita made things like tortillas, burritos, escabeche, as well as other native foods. In our free time, we played with the local children, learned to make tortillas and pottery, visited historical sites, and were able to get to know everyone in the village very, very well. Also, the scenery was breathtaking, and unlike anything I'd be able to see here in Cleveland. In conclusion, this trip has opened my eyes to the world around me and has helped me to realize that there is so much more to life. I wanted to talk about this experience in case other high school students were interested in pursuing or in participating in a type of opportunity like this in the future. This experience has solidified my intent to pursue a career in the medical field and continue on the path of helping people in need. Thank you.
I do not see any other public comment slips before me. Are there any, does anyone else have a public comment? Hearing none. Lorenzo, thank you very much. We appreciate you letting us know about it. I know at Strongsville High School, we have a very similar program where we visit Honduras. We have your email address, and we'll make sure to pass it on to the right people. Mr. Raiba?
Thank you. We are going to move on. We have a couple of discussion items. If any of our guests tonight would like to exit, this is the time you could exit. If you would like to stay, please be more than happy to stay. But one of the things we've talked about throughout recent board meetings is sharing updates on our Strong Schools 2020 Plan, and we have two presentations to give updates on where we're at with the plan, and Jenny's going to start us off, and she will go to the podium now.
Thank you, Mr. Raiba. Good evening, members of the board. So, what a wonderful night it's been already, just recognizing so many of you and also our students. And so, along with all these things that we do and the recognitions that our students get, we do a little thing called instruction along the way as well. So, I'm going to talk about our instructional innovation plan. If you remember, we participated in the OIP, Ohio Improvement Process, prior to this, and we voluntarily participated in that. And that plan had a lot of tasks and a lot of to-do things on it, and now, we felt strongly that we didn't want to be in an improvement status because we voluntarily did that, and we changed the name this time to the Instructional Innovation Plan because that's really what it is. It's this plan for us to all be on the same page, moving in the same direction together at once. This plan will extend from 2016 to 2019, so much of what I talked about, we've begun, we'll continue to do, and we'll continue to solidify all the way through 2019. So, if you remember, we have
We are going to move on. We have a couple of discussion items. If any of our guests tonight would like to exit, this is the time you could exit. If you would like to stay, please be more than happy to stay. But, one of the things we've talked about throughout recent board meetings is sharing updates on our Strong Schools 2020 Plan. And we have two presentations to give updates on where we're at with the plan. And Jenny's going to start us off, and she will go to the podium now.
Thank you, Mr. Reiba. Good evening, members of the board. So, what a wonderful night it's been already, just recognizing so many of you and also our students. And so, along with all these things that we do and the recognitions that our students get, we do a little thing called instruction along the way as well. So, I'm going to talk about our Instructional Innovation Plan. If you remember, we participated in the OIP, Ohio Improvement Process, prior to this, and we voluntarily participated in that. And that plan had a lot of tasks and a lot of to-do things on it. And now, we felt strongly that we didn't want to be in an improvement status because we voluntarily did that. And we changed the name this time to the Instructional Innovation Plan because that's really what it is. It's this plan for us to all be on the same page, moving in the same direction together at once. This plan will extend from 2016 to 2019. So, much of what I talk about, we've begun, will continue to do, and will continue to solidify all the way through 2019. So, if you remember, we have four main areas of this plan: curriculum, instruction, supports, and assessment. It also encompasses the overarching umbrella of universal design for learning. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about what that means later, but basically, it's teaching every student every day and giving every student what they need. And that is really something that our district leadership team comprised of administration, teachers, psychologists, counselors, have, feel that is the most important thing that we need to do each and every day. So, as an overview, as you'll see on each slide, I have pictures that evidence the work that we've done. A lot of the pictures are of adults, because we feel that in order to get moving in this plan, we need to change the behavior of adults and make sure that we're following up on what we say we're going to do. So, for curriculum, I'll begin with this. August through December, Erin has just done a phenomenal job working with our teachers to make sure that our pacing guides, our curriculum, our maps are all in line, so that a teacher at Chapman, a teacher at Kinsner, a teacher at the middle school, wherever you are, you are doing the same thing. You're teaching the same things. Sometimes the activities may vary, obviously. That's the creative part of teaching. But they're following the same thing and kids are getting an equal opportunity education. Not only has she done that horizontally, but she's done it vertically. So, teachers that are in sixth grade are looking at what students need to be doing in seventh grade and eighth grade and where they need to leave seventh grade to be prepared for eighth grade, for example, and making sure that we are adequately preparing our From January to June, we will begin to focus more on, in making sure, S13 is one thing, is the next step for our buildings, to make sure that these things are happening. So, our principals will be going into classrooms, our teachers will be meeting in their teacher-based teams, to make sure what we said we were going to do, we are actually doing on a day-to-day basis. We started that vertical alignment just the other day, on Tuesday, where our departments, our grade levels, were able to meet and collaborate during the PD day that we had. She will also be working on writing, explicit writing rubrics, and making sure that writing is not only in language arts class but across the curriculum, and that our expectations are the same. So, our students know if they go to science, I'm expected to write a full sentence. I'm expected to write a paragraph, and so on and so forth. And she's working with teachers and administration to develop those guidelines. So, that is where we'll be working in curriculum from January through June. As far as evidence-based instructional practices, we focused a lot on this action step. It's very important that we are truly providing intervention to our students that may not get it the first time. And we have worked really closely with our district leadership team and our building leadership teams. We've analyzed five-step process forms where they go through the data and kind of figure out, what do we need to do? And we've found that, you know, sometimes our interventions weren't so clear, and we needed to clarify that. And we did. We did just last week, and we talked about what an intervention is, what a strategy is, and making sure that everybody is on the same page. So, continuing January through June, we are going to continue with that work as well, as well as getting, going deeper into UDL, which I mentioned at the beginning, Universal Design for Learning Framework. We have had a group of us that have attended several conferences, several workshops throughout this year. We have one more coming up in February. And then from there, we are going to create a plan. A plan to roll this out to our principals and to our teachers to make sure that we can begin truly being a universal design for learning school district. We are also going to make sure that we look at our co-teaching teams. So, our students that are in classrooms that need that extra assistance, and our teachers are well-equipped to work with them. We do have many successful co-teaching teams already that exist, so taking their lead and figuring out what they're doing well and creating a guideline. Because as we change schedules and we change things around a little bit and kids' needs change, sometimes those teams change. So, whether, it doesn't matter who you're working with, the guidelines will be there so you don't have to start from scratch. So, that's really the goal of that action step this next semester. For school-based systematic support, this is an area that we've been really working on, looking at, again, our interventions, student progress, make sure we're grouping kids appropriately. And then, you've already heard me speak about social-emotional needs, and we've taken a huge step forward in that with our maps and our assessment and surveying students and parents with that. And finally, our PBS Pride. We have really looked at that and have some presentations as well to PTA, for example, on the success of that program. So, again, we don't want to forget about these things. They're very important. We will continue to work through a lot of these items and just strengthen what we've already started with these areas. January through June, Andy's department has been working really hard with the psychologists on a multi-tiered system of support handbook. So, for example, if a student is not understanding, whether it be academic, social, emotional, with what we give all kids, we go to tier two or tier three, and there's special groups, or there are other interventions that take place and kind of having that menu, if you will, for teachers and, you know, our psychologists to follow in order to know what these students need and have options for, based on what they need. Professional development, we have already started that with Susan Fee coming last week. I'm proud to say we had about 26% of our staff attend this. Anxiety, the topic was anxiety, and many parents in the district attended as well. And so, we are going to continue to increase teacher capacity in the area of social-emotional health, and our counselors are working on professional development plans for that for the semester. And then, of course, making sure that we're communicating internally and externally to parents if there are situations where students need help. Finally, assessment data practices for informed decision-making. We have worked very hard, obviously. As you may know, we are going to all online format of testing. So, that is one area where we are working closely with teachers to make sure students get every opportunity and practice of how to write on the computer, type on the computer, because a lot of these assessments, all the assessments will be online. And so, they're actually doing things with, embedded into their instruction to get our students prepared for that. Again, looking at our assessments, making sure they're rigorous, making sure they're aligned, making sure that what we're, what we really want students to know is really being reflected in those assessments. And then, making sure we're analyzing those results and making sure that, looking at our data, looking at the kids that may not be getting it and understanding it, and making sure that we're putting in the correct strategies and interventions in place for them. And then, finally, ongoing support. As you know, we have instituted TBT coaches for our district. So, teachers are going in and helping teachers and having conversations to talk about, making sure that they're following through on certain steps and they're following through on what they said, what the data looks like, and going through that process, again, based on their assessments. And then, January through June, some of our teachers, for example, we just met with our special area teachers this morning, our math, I'm sorry, our PE teachers, for example. There's like one PE teacher at Kinsner, one at Chapman. So, it's a little more difficult for them to collaborate on a day-to-day basis. So, we're going to be looking at, how do we develop a virtual teacher-based team so that they can have that same collaboration with each other and talk about strategies and things, good, solid practices for the classroom? And then, finally, we've started this a little bit. Our building leadership teams have attended some workshops all together to talk about best practices, but we want to make sure that everybody's on the same page. We've had that discussion with our administrators already and kind of looking at structures and formats and how you give feedback to teachers from the building team, and making sure that they're clearly aware of what's going on. And so, we want to make sure we continue to do a summit or a meeting place for all of our BL teams to be on the same page. So, those are the things that we've done, the things that we're working on, kind of in a nutshell, brief overview. If you have any questions for me, I can answer those now.
So, just for the, to slow things down a little bit, we're talking about universal design of learning framework. Were we in a situation, because I understand we have a lot of testing, state-mandated testing, right? Were we, were our elementary buildings misaligned? Were we teaching different things at different times? Are we trying to, my assumption is we're trying to create a framework where, as personal come and go, principals come and go, teachers come and go, that we have a framework that everybody's pulling towards in the same fashion? Am I correct? And then, by creating a similarity between all of our buildings, we can then measure our successes and failures and modify then, not just, hey, we need to modify Kinsner because they're doing something wrong. We're modifying the whole set so we can measure everyone at the same time. Am I correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And were we, did we have a lack of that stability throughout this district in years past where we're trying to bring it all together now?
I would say that, you know, I don't, Erin is, Erin has worked really hard to make sure that the curriculum is aligned, that, you know, when we have certain standards, we're making sure that we're covering those standards. And things have changed and evolved a little bit, too. Some of our resources that we've been leaning on and we've already purchased new, we're making sure that the new, for example, guided reading, that we make sure that people are implementing it with fidelity and making sure that they are following that particular program and kind of letting go of the other things that they may have used in the past. It's all good stuff. It's, you know, nobody's out to do the wrong thing. It's just, you know, sometimes teachers like what they've been using and they've had good results with it. But we want to make sure that, you know, as, for example, first-grade TBTs meet, that they can all look at the same assessment, gather the same data, and say, for example, you know, somebody at Sarar, their kids really did well on a particular question. Well, the conversation then is, what did you do? How did you teach that, that part of it? Because my kids maybe didn't do as well on that assessment. And to have those internal assessments and to be analyzing those on a regular basis, it really gives us good feedback to how our students will perform on the state tests. So, we're trying to align that, align the rigor that the state tests do require with what the teachers do on a daily basis. So, I don't know if that answers your question.
It does, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Jenny.
I had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not so quick.
So close.
I appreciate the aligning of all of our curriculums across our district. Does this also carry over to assigned homework for various grades and?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, you know, again, the power of a teacher-based team is that teachers are working together to make sure they're, they're using the best practices. And it's kind of like, you know, sometimes we're used to working in isolation in our classroom and it's kind of like working smarter, not harder. You know, if the person that I teach with, my partner, is doing something, let's share the workload a little bit and let's communicate. What is the best homework that we want to give our students to make sure that it's not just, you know, to do, it's really aligned with what they need and what they need to practice on? So, yes, we're working toward that, Jane, to make sure that they're having those discussions and.
So, are you working about quantity and quality of homework or?
Again, I can't speak to specifically what they're, you know, every, on a day-to-day basis of homework, but truly the recommended, you know, we always kind of go by the guideline, if you're in first grade, maybe 10 minutes of homework, and second grade, 20 minutes of homework, kind of, kind of thing. So, if, you know, you hear of anything where it's out of whack, we appreciate that feedback.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Jenny?
Yeah.
What strikes me is all of that's very high-level and it's all very theoretical. What, the work that we're doing, what can a parent or a student expect to see in a day-by-day? You know, what's tangible that they're going to see, especially like a parent who's had a number of students in the school? What can they say? This is how it was done before, and now because of this, this is what I'm experiencing? Do you have any examples?
I guess, I will say my hope, you know, as we get, you know, we continue this work, my hope is that students are coming home, you know, homework, homework is important and things that they're doing at home to practice what they're doing, but also that it's meaningful, that they're, they're challenged but not frustrated. That they, you know, that, I'll take my own son, for example. You know, it frustrates me when he comes home with a worksheet and he does it in five minutes and it's like, you understood it already, why do you need to do this? You know? I want it to be things that are, that are more, teach them collaboration, allow them to express themselves, so maybe they, to express what they learn, maybe they want to draw a cartoon about it. Maybe they want to write a paragraph about it. Maybe they want to do, create a PowerPoint slideshow, you know, on it. So, allowing them a little bit of choice and options to present the information that they know, and not so much just practice because here's the worksheet, everybody's going to get the worksheet today. So, kind of moving in that direction where we're looking exactly, you know, what students need and to help better prepare them for class the next day.
I think, Mr. Miko, the part that I would add is, kind of as Mr. Roseanne shared, it may be difficult for an individual parent to see, but no matter what classroom, what building, there should be a consistent expectation, there can be, should be a consistent experience. And there's, there's not just the look at, what do I teach in my classroom at this grade level in my subject, but how does what I teach impact the grades below me and above me so that we have students on the path that they need to be on by the time they graduate from high school? So, as Jenny said at the, at the beginning, we're focused on how do we help develop the skills and capacity of our adults? And how do we align the experiences across the district? And so, that's the part that, if they have had children in multiple buildings or had in multiple subject areas, or it doesn't matter if they have Mr. Stephan or Ms. Baker or whatever seventh-grade science teacher that they have, they're going to have seventh-grade science and it's a similar experience, no matter which of our teams they're on at the middle school. And we worked hard at that, because in any school district, people would say, well, this team did this and this team did that. And that's always going to be that piece of it. But, curricularly and educationally, there will be a consistent expectation, consistent experience. And the way technology has helped us to evolve is our teachers are enjoying the collaboration. No longer do I have to sit and create all the resources or all the assessments on my own. I can link it to the curriculum app and say, here's the assessment I'm using. We can all use that same assessment. And then, you know what? When we get together, we're going to talk about that assessment and make sure it was meaningful to the students that we taught in determining their learning. So, you know, there's some other aspects of the plan that I think will be more evident to parents in year two and year three, but right now, this whole year has been focused on how do we get all of our adults on the same page for the education of our kids?
So, the one, the one feedback I would give is, you know, eventually it gets clunky and it just gets day-to-day. And if we use our high school or our middle school, the midterm, as an example, as we're developing assessments, which is a fancy word for tests, as we're developing those, they're all the same, and we need to be cognizant that if we develop a bad one, it's going to be bad and we're going to have an outlier. And it's fine to say we need to improve it, but we also need to recognize if we have an outlier, we need to do something for those students. And as we're growing into this, we're going to have those situations where our first step out of the gate is not going to be our best step. And I think it's important that we recognize, not just, as Mr. Reiba said, constantly getting better, but if, if we have a clunker, we got to address it because it affects those students who are going through that process. Do you have a comment, George?
Yeah, I have one more comment. I've been very fortunate to work for some great companies. In the very early 90s, I worked for a national company that would send out a publication once every three months on best practices. And I'll never forget my boss, he grabbed that piece of paper, made photocopies for everybody, and said, highlight your best prac, your best practice. And we'd always ask why. And he goes, because that's someone's great idea. And that's someone's great idea made a lot of money for their boss. So, I want you guys to look at these best practices. It's 2017, and we've finally come up with a format, thanks to our administrative staff, where teachers can share their best practices. Like you just said, if a teacher has a problem with a certain subject or a certain section of a subject, they now have that community to be able to say, how did you teach it? Any ideas? I mean, we're 20 years later and we're doing that. So, great idea, we need some, you know, practical applications for it and to be able to measure it, but we're moving in the right step, right, we're moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Going on to the next part we wanted to share with you, you know, Jenny has a part of her plan, shared TBT coaches. That's a voluntary position that some of the teachers hold in our district to help support. Vicky has technology coaches that she's utilized throughout the district. And what Erin's going to share, one of our action steps, is kind of like we talked about last meeting with our concept of administrative internship program, some research that she's done about instructional coaches and how it could help enhance our district. So, Erin?
Thank you. I'd first like to echo what's been said already. Thank you for your service, for everything you do for the district, to the board. We truly appreciate it. And as Mr. Reiba said, he gave a presentation at the last meeting about the administrative interns. I'm going to do similar tonight where I present the information, and nothing is a formal proposal or a formal recommendation at this point, but just kind of to give you the information, find out how this can help our district and help move us forward. But just kind of to give you the, the information, find out how this can help our district and help move us forward. So we're in the process of developing or exploring different initiatives as our instructional innovation plan that Jenny talked about, as well as our Strong Schools 2020. And one of the action steps in that plan is what you see here, to develop a proposal for the inclusion of instructional coaches. And I'll go ahead and talk about this. This first slide is talking about how important a teacher is. So it comes down really, it's not the curriculum so much, it's not the buildings, it's not the principal. Those are all incredibly important. The number one factor is the quality of the teacher in the classroom. And that makes more impact on students and their learning than anything else. So why is that important? Why do we want or need or utilize coaches? There are many districts that do utilize instructional coaches, which I'll talk about in a minute. But the key here is because the teacher is the main factor, the most critical piece of the puzzle, we want to focus on improving the, the teacher. Increasing teacher capacity will accelerate the learning. And with the instructional coaches, we have really good teachers. But what's tough as a teacher is you're in your classroom by yourself. And very rarely do you have that opportunity to look at your classroom practice in reflective ways. So you meet with your TBTs, you talk strategies, you talk about data. But you don't often get, by nature of being a teacher, support, feedback, ongoing, individualized learning. You may have principals, they come in, they do your evaluation, they do walkthroughs. You have friends and colleagues that come in. But not too often do you have coaches in there that can help directly improve your instruction. And what research is showing is this is one way that is becoming very cost-effective for districts. Reason being, we do a lot of professional development and it's incredibly important. But lots of studies, and I cited just one here, but we're finding that when teachers go and get to professional development, whether it's in district, it's onsite elsewhere, they read a book, they watch an instructional video, very little of that is actually implemented back in the classroom. Not because they don't want to, but because it's easy to fall back into what you know. And if you're not quite sure exactly how it should look, what the exact methodology is, if you're doing it right, if you're not, it's actually staggering statistics. So less than 10% actually gets implemented from new PD. But with coaching in the classroom, that skyrockets to over 85%. So here's the district's, last spring, when this first, this idea first came about, I sent out a survey to neighboring districts. And out of those who responded, you see those who said yes, they utilize instructional coaches and those that say no. You will see some of our comparables are definitely in the yes column. And these premier districts that we aspire to be, we have many in the yes. Not saying the noes can't be premier and, and top quality, but it is something that is really trending to be positive and to have a positive impact. So, how will coaches help? Again, we have district initiatives. We spend a lot of time, a lot of manpower, trying to implement with fidelity in the district what we want to happen. So we do have that similarity. We have the same curriculum throughout, we have assessments. But it's hard to see the big picture of that sometimes. So you're a principal, you know what's happening in your building. You're a teacher, you know what's happening in the classroom. I have a, a pretty good picture as to what's happening. But with a coach, we can really ensure that the district initiatives are happening systematically. And teachers can get feedback in the moment. So again, back to that professional development, if you go and you learn information, it's challenging to always apply it exactly how it looks when you're in your class with your kids and something's happening. You know, maybe I wasn't trained for that. I don't know how to respond to that exactly. They didn't tell, tell us when I went to that PD session. Sometimes we say, okay, but teachers, they're very good, they know their craft, they went to school. Why would they need a coach? And I asked a few people just for their opinions, you know, skilled professional athletes, do they need coaches? And, and by far, every single person I asked said absolutely. And I, you know, I said, why? And some of the information, you can move people from good to great. So we have good teachers, but with a coach, they can provide that specific, individualized knowledge. So LeBron James has a coach or more than one coach, Tiger Woods, any professional athlete. The coach may, they know the intricacies. They can watch exactly what's happening, refine the skill, refine exactly in the moment what the athlete, what the coach, what the person needs to really drive forward and, and make that even more effective. So that in-classroom support and refinement when we're talking instructional coaches. And again, teachers, how do they benefit from coaches? So why, why would I want somebody in my classroom watching me? The difference here is it's not the principal, it's not the curriculum director coming in or the superintendent. It's a peer, somebody they have respect for, they probably know because they've built that rapport. And it's not evaluative, that makes a big difference. From them, they can get the feedback and guidance and the teacher then develops and refines their craft. The other piece is, coaches in this regard have incredible vast knowledge in a specific subject area. So we're going to be looking at potentially implementing literacy coaches with this proposal. So the literacy coach is incredibly versed in strategies and in the knowledge with English language arts, writing, reading, more so than somebody that has a vast breadth of knowledge. They have a ton of expertise in that focused area and can provide that feedback. Why are we looking at literacy as a focus? I think you guys could probably answer that. You've seen the test data, you've seen where we are, we shared building improvement plans. We struggle a little bit with literacy and we're not isolated in that. I think you look statewide, national, it's an area that needs improvement. Elementary teachers, they teach reading and they teach it well, but they need to be highly effective. If we don't teach the kids how to read when they're preschool and kindergarten, you know, in the young years, it's going to haunt them for the rest of their career and the rest of their adult lives. The other piece is secondary. So we're phenomenal in our disciplines, but the state standards, common core, every component of standards, we need to integrate into it, the reading and writing. So you're not just learning social studies or government. Into that, you must encompass the reading and writing. What will coaches do? We're going to have these, you know, what would, what would they do? What are some of their responsibilities? Couple of them that I highlighted here, they would work directly with me as the director and building principals. And we look at our literacy. So we have a vision, we know what we want to do, where we want to take literacy. We want to put that into place, helping to utilize these coaches. They would be in the classroom with teachers, maybe modeling a strategy and showing them in the authentic environment, how does it look in a classroom with your kids? Help me to see what that looks like. They can, again, guide, encourage teachers to reflect upon, you know, how are we meeting the needs of the district? How are we implementing guided reading per se, that Jenny talked about? So we do have that consistency, we do have that fidelity. You don't have one teacher that's solely using maybe a basal reader. So it's not the big brother, but it's the, I want to encourage you because I want you, you know, you need to get on board with what we're doing. But oftentimes, that's, the teacher doesn't necessarily know how or doesn't know why. So having that peer in would help with that. Isolate, developing capacity of team, reducing professional isolation. Again, teachers do what they know how to do. So having, inviting somebody in, having them there to give that feedback and reflection will help strengthen the teacher. Couple other things, we are big on data. They would help to analyze the data. So they could say, okay, overall at the building, here's where we need, here's our strengths. Here's where we're seeing we still have needs. And working with the principal to get that big picture. And then also, district overall, where are we? Where do we really need to intensify what we're, what we're focused on? And of course, the coach would also participate in their own professional development to bring back into the classrooms. And also could be versed in, what are the other districts that we are aspiring to be? That we are looking, you know, modeling, that are, what are they doing? You know, are we doing the same thing? What can we do differently? What's working for them? They can bring those ideas back as well. So I put together just a brief schedule. It's lots of words, I'm going to give you the highlights here. In a typical day, an elementary literacy coach might be in a kindergarten classroom for an hour and just observing the teacher, collecting data. Teacher had invited him in and said, I'm struggling with these, you know, I have a group of kids, I'm struggling with how to best reach them. Can you help me? Come in and watch, see what I'm doing, see what the kids are doing. They might go to a first grade classroom after that and do a modeled lesson. So there's a teacher struggling with guided reading. They want to enrich the classroom or enrich the kids. The coach could go in and, and model that and show the teacher how that might look. They could go to a teacher-based team meeting, which is the fourth grade or any grade level teachers, and they would look at data. So they would look at that common assessment and say, okay, let's, let's see where the kids are struggling. Where in number four do we feel that that skill needs a strategy implemented with it? They could have time then to compile resources and write reflective notes for that kindergarten teacher so that that comes back to help at a later time. Another example, things they could do, they could model whole class lessons, maybe on the new writing series that we would implement. Visit classes, this is helpful to the principal, kind of do some walkthroughs and see what's going on when it's not the principal going in. Again, big picture, where are our strengths? What are the teachers doing really well? And you see the kids responding, taking notes of those strategies so they can share those with other teachers. Meeting with the building principal, talking about that data. And then also having a, a conference or a debrief with a teacher. In this instance, it's a fifth grade teacher, just trying to give them some feedback, alternate methods in order to do the lesson that they were working on. How would that maybe look in, in Strongsville? We would look for personnel and we want the coaches that we would hire to have some, some qualities. And the important ones, you know, they have respect, rapport with teachers. They're very skilled in their craft, they have the knowledge in order to have these reflective conversations. They know how to be an effective communicator. Again, they're well-respected, they are confidential, they would be in, in a teacher-type role. So that's important to, you know, know that that person is not judging, they're not evaluating you, but they're, they're almost a peer, serving in that capacity. Knowing how to interpret the data and then also being a lifelong learner. So thinking about how this would look, you know, ideally, I'd love to have a coach in every building. I know that that's not feasible. We are always balancing financial prudence with the student growth piece. So how do we mesh those and still get impact? So the proposal would be to have a full-time coach, split days between the five elementaries. So one person, five days, five days in the week. They would probably be at a building a day a week. And then one person that would go between the middle and the high schools. Again, they would be on, as we're thinking through this, on the teacher's salary schedule as focusing, you know, in the role of a teacher, but as the instructional literacy coach. Again, they would help to implement this instructional innovation plan that Jenny spoke of. The big piece there, three big things they could help do. Improve high-quality instruction, which would help close achievement gaps. Help us to vertically align the curriculum because they see the big picture. They know what's happening in the buildings K through five or six, eight and nine, 12. And again, the big one would be focusing on the reading and the writing across all disciplines. Just some key points as a recap. The use of instructional coaches has shown great gains in student achievement. The key components are the collaboration, the mentorship that you have and the, the ability to have a peer in there and providing you the feedback. So you're not working in isolation. And we have a coach that would specialize in the area of literacy. So incredibly versed in strategies and in methodologies in the literacy to help all the teachers. And that would assist us in moving toward becoming a premier district. So that is a quick snapshot of what it could look like. Again, at this point, it is just research, it's just information, concept as we look to move forward and, and make the decisions as to what's going to best move us into premier district. Questions that I can answer for you?
Duke?
Yeah, Aaron, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Jenny mentioned TBT, coaches or team leaders. How does the coach fit into that picture?
Sure, so.
That's question number one.
Okay, the TBT coach is somebody that goes into the TBT meetings. And what they're looking at at this point is facilitating the process of that meeting. So we're, we're somewhat new in the process, you know, getting together and running through this five-step process where you look at data, analyze the data. So at this point, that person is going into the meetings and helping to facilitate the actual process.
But how, how does that not overlap with this?
Well, they're not in the classroom and they're not observing any of the teachers and what the actual teachers are doing. They're not, you know, they have their own class. So it's something they're doing in addition to teaching.
I guess what I'm getting at, couldn't the coach be the TBT team leader?
Could the coach focus, be a TBT, potentially?
Okay, and my second, it's not really a question, maybe an observation. I understand the concept, I understand what you're getting at. I think one and one is too few. Yeah, I mean, you gotta, if you do it, you know, you're going to put both feet in, Cameron, not one. If you're going to convince us that we need to do this, I think you should do it whole hog and not halfway because this will probably produce halfway results. Not enough people to really make a difference to, you know, get that presence of what we, we call in my world SME, subject matter experts, to go in and, and actually teach and coach. And I do have industry experience with this in particular. But it's a great idea and I understand that. I also think maybe that the administrators, while I understand they have an evaluative, I like that word, role, they have a responsibility as well for the coaching and development of their teams. So it shouldn't always be to have their black hat on. Sometimes they can have their white hat on and go teach, you know.
And one of the things, and, and we do believe that, I would agree with you, Duke, wholeheartedly. The one challenge, I've, I've been a principal at every level. I can talk to teachers about good teaching practice, but I never taught reading, I never taught writing. I taught math and science. So to go in to have a, a conversation with the teacher about how quality literacy instruction looks, whether it's at elementary or middle school or secondary, that's more challenging for our principals to do. Our principals are more versed in talking in content areas that they worked in or that they, that their license is in. So that's the one part, it's, it's a, it's a shared responsibility. Principals can help with pedagogy and teaching practices and skills. Literacy coaches are more, how do you actually teach the content of literacy in the most effective manner? But those are good points and appreciate the feedback.
My question is, where do we find people that have the skill set that we want? They're not just brand-new teachers out of the gate, they're, who are they?
I envision teachers that are phenomenal right now in our district. They're getting great test scores.
So they're not retired teachers?
I think to have the credibility and to have the staff buy-in and to really know what they're talking about and having implemented it, we need current teachers to kind of shift over into this role.
So they're going to abandon their standard classroom to become a coach?
That's the thought process at this point, yes.
Would they be master teachers?
Could they?
No, should they be?
Oh, meaning going through the formal process that you see sometimes here? Definitely could be something to look at.
So I would, I would actually, that would be one of my concerns is because from the, from the things that you talked about, the ideal person for that, for that position is someone who's doing the job well now.
Right.
And is a rock star. And I would want to, I would want to think a much more deeply about taking that person out of the classroom because there's a loss there. And it sounds good on paper, but we've already said the, the best thing for student achievement is great teachers. And now we're taking a great teacher away. And I'd want to make sure, I, I'd want to think long and hard about whether that's a step forward or a step back. And the other thing that we do have to consider is headcount. You know, the, the teacher coaches, if I had a money tree, let's, let's, let's hire as many as we can. Next, the next budget is going to be difficult and that's the kindest way to put it. So we're going to have to, we're going to have to adjust this with that understanding. And I'm still, again, it all sounds good, I'm still not convinced. One of the things that I'm concerned is, is everything, and I understand why, everything is non-evaluative, et cetera, which are all the buzzwords. everything is non-evaluative, et cetera, which are all the buzzwords. But then we're not measuring that person. And if we're gonna put that person into the position, we should have an expectation that our report card's gonna improve, or our grades are gonna improve, or something is going to improve, which, if I'm gonna say that, suddenly means I'm evaluating it. And we're gonna have to figure out how to balance, we don't wanna say that, because it, it has consequences. But at the same time, we need to evaluate it, or else we're just gonna have people in the positions, and everyone will feel good, and everyone will be doing great work, but, but we'll have no way to go back to the taxpayer and say, "This is the impact of your investment."
And what I meant by the non-evaluative is, they're not coming in with a clipboard to a teacher and saying, you know, "Oh, you're not doing that right, I'm gonna talk to the principal about this one." Not evaluative in that manner. We absolutely want to measure the impact that this coach is having on the building, on the classrooms, on the teachers.
Great. Any other questions?
No, though, I, the point, Mr. Miko, that just as we all reflect on, and, you know, as we look at taking our great teachers out of the classroom, that's exactly what we have to balance. And what we balance that with is the scope of influence. You know, can we translate what that teacher does in his or her classroom with X amount of students that they influence? Whether it's at the high school level and it's 150, or at the elementary level and it's 25, versus, they can have that impact with hundreds and thousands of students. That's the balance that, that we have to have when, when we make these decisions. And we're blessed with a lot of great teachers here. But yeah, every time you take one out in the classroom, and they become an assistant principal in our district, or they become, you know, an assistant superintendent in our district, or a coach, that's the part that you've gotta, you've gotta go with. So we appreciate the feedback. And like I shared last time, based on your feedback and feedback from our staff, we will come back in the early spring with a prioritized list of what we would be recommending for the board to go forward. We don't anticipate that, because of that balance with the financials and academics, that we can do everything that we're proposing. But just wanted to get that out there, to get some good feedback and thoughts from the groups.
I appreciate your feedback, thank you.
I do have, I mean,
Okay.
if we're talking about, you're talking about putting a person in every elementary building, middle school and high school, correct?
Two total staff members. So one would split time between the five buildings.
One staff would split, okay.
Right, and one for middle school, high school combo.
Okay. It, it, it's, I'm the cheapskate on the board, right? And we're fortunate enough to have Dan Fausen being able to bring that position back into the district. We're gonna be in some hard times in the next 24 to 36 months. And I'm very concerned with the budget. So it's gonna be really important in the early spring that we sit down together and see what we can implement, but also what we can sustain.
Absolutely.
Because I don't wanna be the guy that has to look at someone in the audience member, you know, "Hired him 12 months ago, but, you know, now we're going for fresh money, and we can't get it." And I don't wanna start something and end it, and the person, the, the people who suffer the most are gonna be the children. So I just, you have to be very careful with what we're gonna do in the next 120 days. I think we'll only sit down and have that conversation.
I agree, thank you.
Thanks, Erin.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, I, one more comment. I want to commend you guys for this stuff, because I think it's a real effort towards standardization.
Yes, absolutely.
And that's a good thing, and there's another military term I'd pass to you. A coach can be a force multiplier, because they can make all your mediocre, I wouldn't say all, whatever teachers you have that aren't at their potential, you can bring them all up. And that way, even if you took a superstar out of the classroom, like you said, now you're affecting all the other kids and, and bringing them up, providing you pick the right person as the coach. So congratulations on this effort, and I think it's good that you're trying to move us forward.
Thanks.
Thank you, Erin, thank you to the board for their feedback. I did wanna skip, Chad has been here, he's one of our new recommendations. He's been a trooper and been here so far. So Jenny's gonna go and, and share with you a recommendation of our new assistant transportation supervisor.
Chad, would you wanna join me up here, please? Okay, I'm going off memory, so let's see how good I am. I want to introduce to you Chad Tucker. Our transportation department is now complete. He, we are recommending him tonight for it to be our assistant supervisor of transportation. Chad has a quite diverse background. He was in IT and banking, right, for PNC? In KeyBank, yes, for many years. He, you know, unfortunately, had a transfer to Pennsylvania, I believe, and decided, "No, I wanna come back to Ohio." I think your wife had something to do with that as well, so. And he also has started his own landscaping business. He was an entrepreneur and, and started that. And just was, in your words, I believe, bored, and wanted something new and exciting, so he became a bus driver. And one of my favorite stories that Chad told in the interview process was, you know, he was waiting for, to drop the students off, and he had rounds of American Idol and gave students gift cards on the winner. And, you know, and the, and the rounds of the interview would come in, and I'd ask him, "Who won today, Chad?" And he would, "Oh, Juliette won today, she did a really nice job." So, you know, he's very engaging, I think he's gonna be a great addition to our transportation department, so welcome, Chad Tucker.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard, Chad.
Congratulations, we're looking forward to having you.
Congratulations.
And Mrs. Tucker.
You know, Jenny's right, I, I had the opportunity to meet with Chad a few times, and after Chad left the first time, we were down a few, and I, and I told her, I said, "We found our guy." He's the right guy for the right position at the right time, and, you know, has such a vast knowledge and skill set. That's what we always look at, not who can fill the position, but who can make the position better and move the department better. And with, with Lori in, in her role, and Chad in his role, there's bright future for our transportation department. So looking forward to working with both of you in your new roles. With that, you're gonna, I believe, we'll go back to the agenda.
You can go if you'd like.
That's what I'm trying to tell him, he can go.
Everybody leaves, Chad, you don't, you're not gonna hurt our feelings.
I tried to, but they won't let me.
You're up early.
Thanks. So, Mr. Miko, we could go back to the agenda, number nine, at your convenience.
Number nine is approval of minutes. I have the November 3, 2016 regular board meeting, and the November 17, 2016 regular board meeting. So moved. Motion by Mr. Evans.
Second.
Second by Mr. Grozen, George?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Grozen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And I now turn it over to George for the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Just to reiterate what everyone said for board recognition month, thank you for everything you guys do, for all the time you put in, and for the leadership you provide. Thank you, it's much appreciated. I know, just based on what we had tonight, that the community and the students appreciate it as well. So going to my treasurer's report, item A is the financial report for month ending November 30. If you can find Exhibit A, normally that'd be on a December regular session, but since we had a one-board meeting in December, and it was early, wasn't able to get it on, so it's on for January. Moving on to item B is the financial report for month ending December 31, Exhibit B, and I also have my supplemental presentation to go along with it. So I'll be moving to the podium. So our district goals, as we mentioned before, this one falls under, of course, financial prudence. And then the next few slides are financial prudence that we have throughout the years that we've touched on in the past. Then moving on to general fund summary, this is as of November, or as of December, the title is incorrect. I missed it when I was updating the chart, but the date, the data's in there for December. For December, revenues, it was, it's kind of a long time for revenues. We got our monthly state foundation payment, and some other revenues. And then overall, our revenues are slightly higher compared, this, through December, compared to December last year. And then our expenditures, overall, compared to last year to this year, expenditures are a little bit lower. It's primarily due to, last July, we had one additional payroll compared to this payroll. As you can see on a month-to-month basis, our payroll is higher this year compared to December of last year. So that is catching up as years pass. And our benefits are slightly lower compared to last year, which is primarily due to a few less employees. This year, this December, benefits were a little bit higher than last December, and it was primarily due, when workers' comp payment is due to the Workers' Comp Bureau. Typically, it's due in May, they changed the schedule, and this year, we had to pay it by January, by January 5th, so we paid it in December. General fund revenues, and the forecast, we forecasted 71.4 million. Through December, we received 33.5 million. Currently, we're trending on target to receive another 37.9 million through January, through June. Our biggest revenues is our tax revenues. We have two more settlements to go, actually one more, because we received our tax advance in January, came last week. It was slightly lower compared to last January, and it was because they sent it out a week earlier than they did last January. So our advance is gonna be in February, so, once February passes, we'll know where we stand with our property taxes, and that's our biggest piece of revenue. Overall, the rest of the revenues are trending on target, with the exception of our state foundation. It's gonna come in a little lower than what I forecasted, and that's mainly due to a prior-year adjustment by the, after all the EMS data was submitted from our district, from the charters and parochials, they, they made an adjustment, which is impacting us this year. And they did the same thing the year before, the year before, we benefit from it. So it's kinda, they gave us more one year and taken away the next year, so it kind of washes out. Revenues by category, as you can see, it's been pretty consistent from year to year in property tax and our state foundation. Our state proprietary allocation is declining, and that's due to the TPP phase-out from this year's Binyan budget. Moving on to general fund expenditures, spending comparison through December. Six months of the fiscal year have passed, so our target is 50%. We've also had 12 out of 24 payrolls, so we're targeting 50% as we're measuring. So overall, of our total general fund budget of 72.1 million with prior encumbrances, our total appropriation, 73.1. We have spent about 49, 49.3% of that have spent or encumbered, so we're trending to where we should be for our budget for this time of year. The next two charts, expenditures through December 31. The chart look, on the left, looks at percent expended and encumbered. Through the, the black line shows the 50%, it's where we're expected. As you can see, for salaries and benefits, our biggest one is right where it should be. And then the other line items, they're kinda cyclical in the sense of purchase services and materials and capital outlay. They're, they're paid when goods are ordered and received, and when they need it, when it's needed. So that's kind of where they fluctuate, and the yellow bar is based on average of three years. So everything is, everything is trending on target to where we should be for this time of year. And then on the left, there's our actual, on the right is our actual expenditures. So as you can see, the comparison from the prior two months, or prior two years, the charts, the bars are right where everything was historical. And then our general fund cash balance, where we stand through December. Right now, we have total revenues for the year 33.56 million, expenses 33.2. So our revenues are over expenses by 441,000. Our ending cash balance is 18.8 million, with our encumbrances of 2.9 million, leaving us an unencumbered balance of 15 million through December. Down the chart on the right is our cash balances of the last three years, month by month. I did make a change to this chart from the previous months. What I did was, you'll notice the black line that's in there. And then within our district's 2020 plan, we established a cash reserve benchmark of having 60 days of operating cash on hand at all time, which at this point, that represents 10.8 million, and currently, we're above that benchmark. So this is something that I'll be measuring every month, as we're doing the month-end report, to know where we stand and where cash balance should be. And then, just an update on our student fee balances through January 12. Students had till December 22 to pay their fees, their current-year fees, and after that, their student pass accounts will be turned off. As of January 12, we have 1,373 students with outstanding, current-year balance of 114,000, and then 353,000, or 353 students with prior-year balance of 57,000. Give us a total of 171,000.
Of those 353 are still in the system, they're still here as students?
Right, they're still here as students.
Okay.
Of those 353, 70 are on a payment plan, and the 70 that are on a payment plan represent a balance of 15,586. So we have roughly of that 57,000. 42,000, that's kind of still a nimble, but as kids go through the system, once they enter high school, and they start entering more activities, and as we saw this year, once we started limiting their participation with our outstanding fee balance, they pay in a hurry. Once we tell, once we withhold them from a game, or can't go to a dance, then their fees get paid. So overall, the current-year balance, it's a little better than it was compared to last year through, through January. But we are, make, we're, we're still exploring options on collecting it. I am gonna be sending out, now that I've found out how School Messenger works, I'm gonna try and send out more automated calls from me on a more, more consistent basis, try to, just try reminding folks.
You have 280, approximately, students that are not on a plan and in arrears, correct?
Right.
Okay, I would like to see a breakout of those 280 students, if they're in elementary, middle school, or high school. And if they're in high school, what grade they're in in high school. And then, we can take a look and see what other actions are necessary to get with their parents and figure out why they aren't paying the fees that are due. It's not fair to all the people that do pay their fees. I mean, unless some of these kids are on the, you know, reduced price, or free lunches and all that, and they're in, in a situation where they physically can't afford it, then we have to do something else. And I'd like to eliminate them from the count. But the ones that are in a physical position where they should pay it, we need to figure out what we need to do to get the money that they're, that is due, because it's not fair to everybody that pays the money that's due.
Right.
And I'm, for one board member here, I'm tired of suddenly goofing around with them. We've been doing it for now two years, so it's time.
George? And those, those, sorry, those, those students that are on the free, on the, on the free lunch are not accounted in this count. They're-
Okay, so everybody of those 280, we, as, to our knowledge, has the fiscal means to pay their dues.
Correct.
Okay.
George, if I can suggest, just break it down by grade?
Yeah.
And then, and then we can, we can do the subtotals. You're already taking out the ones that are, that are on a free and reduced lunch, et cetera, so we don't need to see those numbers, but you can just see the 200-some-odd.
Right.
By grade. You mentioned that the high school, where we start to say they can't go to a dance, or what have you. We have those activities at the middle school. Are we following the same procedure at the middle school?
Should be, if there's a pay dance, if there's a ticket. I should, I think the winter formal's coming up in a couple weeks.
So there's another opportunity, and, you know, I, and I know there's, I know there's activities and things like that that occur at the elementary also. We should just, you know, make it across the board, and make sure that we have a standard and we're consistent at all of the elementary schools.
George, if I could, page six, far-right column year-to-date change from previous, property tax allocation on the far-right's a negative 700,000. That is the reduction of the TPP fund, correct? So next year, what will that year-to-date difference be?
It'll be about 3 million.
3 million dollars? Okay.
Yeah, right now, that's 700, for this year, that's 700,000. The TPP was paid, or it still is, because we still receive a portion of it. It's paid in November and May. So that's been reduced by that amount, and we're gonna get some of it back through a supplement through our state foundation, that's gonna come at the end of the year, but-
But we're gonna be short 3 million dollars?
Yeah, this year, we're gonna be short 700,000, and next year, we're gonna be short 3 million. So for a total loss of 3.6 on an annual basis.
And then on page 12, the expenditures through December 31, capital outlay for 2017- 2017 was a pretty big increase. Is that the five hundred thousand dollars we spent on Chromebooks for the incoming freshmen?
Yes, that could be a part of it.
Okay.
That money, that's where that money's being paid from.
Thank you.
Yep.
It's four hundred forty-nine thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars, that's where the Chromebooks came in.
Yeah.
If there's no further questions, do you have a few more items on the agenda? Item C, Association, School Boards Association dues, eight thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars, with school management news for a hundred and fifty dollars, for a total cost of nine thousand twenty-nine. This is an annual resolution to keep participating in the Ohio School Boards Association on a yearly basis, to have the district involved with that. Item D, new fund for fiscal year seventeen. This is the Junior ROTC program, creating a student activities account, which will allow them to fundraise and buy any supplemental pro, supplemental materials to support their program. That fund will be overs, this account will be oversight by the instructor, Mr. Dave Karpinski. Item E, Student Activity Program Purpose Goals and Budget for Fiscal Year Seventeen, that's just the budget for that student activity account for the JROTC. And item F, amendment, amended permanent appropriations, can be found on Exhibit E in the Changes to the Appropriation Measure listed on Exhibit E. And if there are no other questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chart.
Thanks.
Mr. Reba.
Thank you, Mr. Mikko. Before I get to the few items under my agenda, I just want to ask Dan to come to the podium real quick to share some details. We have an upcoming spaghetti dinner. We're excited about it, so Dan, if you want to share a few of the highlights and how people can become involved.
Sure. So, Friday, February 3rd, we are having a community spaghetti dinner. It's open to all residents in Strongsville. It is before the varsity boys basketball game, we play Liria that night. That is a separate admission price, but the community spaghetti dinner is seven dollars for those over the age of thirteen. From ages six to twelve, it's a five-dollar charge, and those under five and under are free. The proceeds for the spaghetti dinner will go to the Continue the Excellence campaign, and we are looking forward to a great night of good pasta and good fellowship with, with our community, so, any questions?
Where is it?
It's, I'm sorry, it's at Strongsville High School, and it's from 5:00 to 7:00 P.M. Thank you, Duke.
Who's cooking?
Chart Wells.
Okay.
And you get what, spaghetti?
Spaghetti, meatball, salad, cookie, and drink. Well worth the, well worth the price.
That's right. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
We hope to see folks out there for our first spaghetti dinner, and you could get advanced tickets if you want, or tickets at the door, and that's been, it's been our last couple of e-blasts, it'll be in there again on Friday.
And go home with all the kids too next week.
And it'll go home with all the kids as well next week, so, thanks for, Dan, for initiating this new endeavor, and we'll see how the first one goes. The two items under timely information for me are recommendations on some revisions to our Administrative and Leadership Handbook. These both deal with, we started a sick bank for our, for both groups, and the acceptance of additional days when, when folks retire from these groups, so be resolved upon the recommendation that the Administrative Handbook and the Leadership Handbook, adopted for the period of August 1st '16 to July 31st '19, be revised, and that the Board of Education approves the updated versions. And that concludes my timely information, unless there's questions. All right, moving on to Business Services, we do have one item for a separate vote, that is the weight room purchase for the high school. Be resolved the recommendation that we approve the purchase of the weight room equipment from the Equipment Guys, bid number two, who provided the lowest, most responsive proposal at the cost of fifty-five thousand seven dollars, as listed in Exhibit F, funding to be from the Permanent Improvement Fund.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Grozen, second by Mr. Evans, any discussion?
Yes, can someone explain to the public exactly what we're getting for our fifty-five thousand dollars in our brand-new renovated weight room area?
Yes.
Better be more than two dumbbells and a jump rope. Andy, do you want to come up?
We're getting a lot of stuff. Andy, do you know, you remember the details?
Uh...
Give a good overview?
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for having me, I wasn't prepared to speak tonight, but the, the weight room project, which I overviewed at a board meeting, I think last year, about this time, a lot of work has gone into what that room will look like with our coaching staff, and getting that out to different vendors. Certainly, you can see the list that ended up actually bidding on the project and working with them. The majority of the equipment, the bulk of the equipment is, when you come in the room, what you'll mainly see are half racks, which are the terminology for multi-station workout areas for bench press, squatting, all the different activities that will need to be done in that room, including performance equipment, like plyometric equipment, all the weight that's necessary, dumbbells, free weights, the kettlebells. There's a lengthy list of equipment that we're getting, I'd be certainly happy to forward it to the school board of exactly what that equipment is, but a lot of work has gone into outfitting and what that room will look like to most benefit, have the biggest benefit for our student athletes and our physical education program, so...
How many stations?
There, there are six half racks, which end up being twelve stations.
Agreed.
So, when you, when you come in the room, there'll be down the middle, six of them, and you work out on both sides, so technically, twelve stations.
And so, everything's going to be brand-new in the room, as Andy said, brand-new dumbbells, brand-new weights, brand-new benches, brand-new half racks, brand-new boxes, plyometric boxes as we have, so going from the equipment that we've had. The one nice feature that's on there too is, everything is built to last. The weights have, or at least the weights for the bench press, I have a, you know, rubber coating on them, they have our, they're personalized with our Strongsville logo on the benches and on the weights, so it's going to be a weight room that not only matches what our athletes need, but as well as our PE classes that use that weight room throughout the school day, so it's going to be a great asset to our high school community as a whole.
And just my own personal opinion, what we were using in the past was embarrassing. It was not what is up to standards, just absolutely not. So, with the money that we put into the high school, these weights, I mean, it rivals the weight rooms of any school district in northeast Ohio, and we should be very proud of that, plus also the access now for all of our student athletes, not just football, but boys, girls, sports, and our PE classes, like you said, Cameron, it's going to have a wide range of benefits all the way through, so, great job.
I'll, I'll forward that list of, of the exact items that are being bid, if you need that.
I have, we have the list, Andy, thank you.
I just wanted everybody to know exactly what that fifty-five thousand dollars was.
So, on behalf of all of our student athletes and our coaches, I thank the school board for considering this project.
Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
Andy, don't run away. Jane?
Oh, no, I just wanted to know what kind of flooring is in this room, and what kind of cleaning process is entailed with all of these athletes that are going to be using this room?
Well, the flooring actually was...
The mother in me cares about this kind of...
The flooring was actually included in the original renovation project, so the flooring component has already been installed. It's a rubber equipment, a rubberized floor specifically for the type of equipment that's going to be used on it, so it's designed to have the maximum amount of weight being dropped on it, about forty-five pounds, and be resistant and resilient, and certainly lasts a long time. That floor actually was installed over the summer, and we've been using the room, because it is a nice, big, open space for now, we've been using that room for conditioning and workouts, so you're free to come over and take a look at it at any time. The cleaning process would be equivalent to the way we clean any of our locker rooms or our athletic facilities right now. Our athletic custodians and our building custodians are, are the best at keeping those, those areas up to standards. I don't know the specific products that they're using, but the, the facilities are being cleaned regularly now where they're located, which is currently out at the stadium. We'll just move that cleaning schedule to the new room once it's outfitted.
I think what she's asking, like, between use, you know, you get one sweaty body on there, they finish, the next guy comes along, in a commercial gym, you're going to have towels available for them to dry off and, and keep it sanitary, or maybe a, you know, wipe of some kind.
The plan is to have disposable wipes, dispensers, which are very common, you see them probably at the rec center or commercial gyms currently. We've had those discussions about adding those components, along with routine and regular cleaning, but as, as you're referring to, in-between use, we'll certainly take that into consideration, and have taken it into consideration, to make sure that that's a clean and sanitary environment for all our students to be using.
Okay.
I'm good, thanks.
So, the only other comments I was going to make is, you know, it's, it's important to all of us, it's important to me, we have the, we, we accepted the best value quote. We didn't accept the lowest quote, we just, we disregarded some of those quotes for safety reasons, the bid didn't meet our requirements, et cetera, so if someone looks at that list, they're going to go, you know, why did, why didn't you take a lower quote? That lower quote wasn't the best value, and that's something that's always been very important, that we get the best value. One of the reasons, and I wanted to comment on it, that we're doing this now, is to take advantage of not having to move equipment twice, and so, we're going to be, we're going to, we're going to vote on whether to pay for this, using funds from the Permanent Improvement Fund, but the goal is to backfill that with continued fundraising. That program that you brought forward about a year ago was a project for fundraising, and similar to the TIRF project, we're making a calculated risk to forward these funds now, because it will be a better value. Otherwise, we'd be moving equipment twice, we'd be moving the equipment that we currently have, that we don't want, and then when we would buy the equipment, we'd have to move it again, which at the end of the day has an increased cost. So, it makes sense for us to take that risk, and for us to forward the money now, but it is important, that we say it out loud, we're not done fundraising, and if anybody in the audience, or in the TV audience, or the YouTube audience, is dying to help fund our weight room, we are dying to talk to you. So, thank you, Andy. Any other questions?
They could eat a lot of spaghetti, too, that would...
Thank you.
There are no other questions, George?
Mr. Grozen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Mikko?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The last item under Business Services is gifts, a donated DVD player by Andy, and connection cables valued at seventy dollars and seventeen cents to help support the new scoreboard at Pecatan Stadium. And Mrs. Ludwig, for a rocking horse at the Strongsville Landing Preschool for use in the sensory room, and we thank those, both of those, Andy and Jane, for those gifts.
Your wife?
I'm sure that helped out the base.
I know, I know, cleaning out my house. Had the box and everything.
Wow. Moving on to curriculum, we'll give her a break after a big presentation, and go through the few items she has. Service agreement with McKean Education Group, this is pass-through money, again, where the financial, or have, financial, I always forget what we call it.
Stuart? Financial oversight.
Oversight of the monies for St. Joseph and John through some of their funds, and this is in the amounts of eleven thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents for three part-time Title I instructors, and it says Title I federal funding, that's approved for non-public schools, and that could be found in Exhibit G. And then the second item is an out-of-state trip for our Strongsville High School Ski Club, to travel to Holiday Valley Ski Resort. The trip will take place on Saturday, February 11th, and expenses will be paid by participating students. And that concludes curriculum, unless there's any questions. Moving on to Student Services, we do have one item with the Educational Service Center of Cuyahoga County, to provide our admission of a student for visual, audiology, and hearing-impaired services for the sixteen-seventeen school year, as is found in Exhibit H, and that concludes Student Services. Finally, Human Resources, Jenny Bockel.
Thank you, Mr. Reba. Under Human Resources this evening, for your consideration, I have under E1, non-certificated resignations, certificated supplemental contract resignations, and non-certificated supplemental resignations there. E2, again, have our appointment of Chad Tucker, Assistant Transportation Supervisor. Have two more appointments for certificated staff, appointments for non-certificated staff, appointments for certificated substitutes, and one appointment for an administrative Continuing under E2, we have appointments for non-certificated substitutes, certificated supplemental contracts, one non-certificated supplemental contract, and continued certificated supplemental contracts paid upon completion, non-certificated supplemental contracts paid upon completion, and finally, appointments for certificated tutors. Under E3, I have one non-certificated continuing contract recommendation. Under E4, we have a few changes in hours of our non-certificated staff. Under E5, a change in status for non-certificated staff in food services, and one monitor. Under E6, one salary upgrade for certificated staff. Under E7, a disability retirement. Under E8, we have non-certificated leadership medical leaves, and also non-certificated medical leaves. Under E9, one unpaid certificated leave, and unpaid medical leaves for our non-certificated staff. Under E10, volunteer coaches, several volunteer chaperones. And finally, under E11, we have the arbitration decision of our non-certificated staff, which can be found in Exhibit I. And that concludes my report, unless you have any questions for me.
And we do not have any report on our technology for this meeting, so that concludes my report, Mr. Mikko.
Thank you, Mr. Reba. Number 12 is report on Polaris Career Center. I just have a few announcements. Thursday, January 26th, from 6:00 to 7:30 P.M. at Polaris, they will be having a host satellite program information night. So, our satellite programs are Polaris programs, but they are taught at their respective high schools. Here in Strongsville, we have our pre-engineering program at the high school, which is freshman through senior, so if, whether you're in the eighth grade, or the ninth, or the 10th grade, and you think you might be interested, this would be a great way to find out about those programs. You can contact Diane Shaft at dshaft@polaris.edu, or 891-7666, or just go to polaris.edu and go to the event calendar, and there'll be plenty of information. I also want to just highlight and give a shout-out, the Construction Trades Program, once again, is building birdhouses, and it's in conjunction with the 2017 NAREY Home Improvement Show, and so the students will build birdhouses, and they're not your traditional birdhouse, these are birdhouses on steroids, these are birdhouses with style and a theme, but it also lets them practice some of their building trade skills. They're auctioned off to benefit the APL, and the students get to visit the Home Improvement Convention and spend some time, especially with the different building and construction trades. And then lastly, Career Tech Thursdays are back, there's the last one in January, January 26th, and then all the Thursdays in February and March, and it is, it's an opportunity for high school students who think they might want to go into a program at Polaris, but aren't sure they can spend a half a day at Polaris, explore the program a little more in-depth, meet some of the students, meet the instructors or the teachers, and if anyone is interested in that, they should see their guidance counselor. And that completes my Polaris report. Moving on to legislation, our 132nd General Assembly is getting to work, they kicked off on January 3rd. I am going to highlight that Tom Patton, who is now in the, one of the, is our House of Representative, or our representative, was elected Majority Whip, and basically, what's on everyone's mind is the next budget. that, uh, Governor Kasich will be, uh, presenting shortly and then we'll all be reacting to. Um, and if you've read any of the news, uh, it is expected to be a very, uh, small increased budget and, uh, we expect that we will be challenged in Strongsville and we'll have to, uh, respond to that challenge. And that concludes my report. Uh, Board Liaison Reports. Why don't we start with Jane?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Miko. Uh, for City Council, at the first City Council meeting, they elected Ken Dooner as the new president of City Council. And at the most recent meeting, we, um, had several swearing-ins of, um, our, first of all, our police chief, Mark Fender, along with, um, several other police officers that were promoted. And so, um, it was a, a very, um, touching evening and all the families were there. It was very nice seeing all their kids and, uh, their spouses and mothers and fathers. Um, and another thing that council is going to be discussing, and there will be a public meeting on March sixth, is, um, considering an ordinance to amend zoning. Um, it's a parcel on eighty-two, um, by the railroad tracks. So if anybody has any comments about that, I urge you to attend the March sixth public meeting. And they're also going to be discussing changing, um, the, uh, uses for what general industrial districts are. So you can go to the website for the City Council and find out more information about that. And that's all for City Council.
I always like to save the best for last, so we're going to come back to student achievement.
Okay.
Duke, do you have any comments?
No.
Reports?
We didn't have any meeting.
George, any reports on Board Liaison?
Um, our facilities meeting is next Thursday. Um, it'll be, has been moved to the last Thursday of every month. Um, and so we'll have something to report the next meeting.
And then Policy Committee, quickly, we have, uh, later in the agenda, the second reading of our policy updates and we'll be voting on those at our next meeting. And now saving the best for last.
All the best for last. Well, um, thank you with the help of Mr. Faust. He, again, agreed to go to, uh, this month's, uh, classroom and take pictures for us, so we have our visual aids. Uh, we're highlighting Chapman this month and Joanne Nosen. She is a third and fourth grade teacher. And, um, she had, um, learned about a class, um, offering called Hour of Code. It was a one-hour introduction to computer science and it was designed to demystify code and to show that anybody can learn the basics and to broaden participation in the field of computer science. And so once she saw it, she thought, wow, I'm going to bring this to my classroom. And did she ever. And the students are so focused, they didn't even pay attention that their pictures were being taken. Um, but a little bit about what coding is. The benefits of teaching coding is it teaches critical thinking, logic, persistence, and creativity. And it helps students excel at problem-solving in all subject areas, no matter what their age. And it's developed with code.org and it's an exciting and engaging curriculum that allows students to explore the limitless world of technology. Um, its research-based curriculum uses a spiraling education design in which concepts and skills are revisited. So all the, um, blend on top of each other as they go through the year. All the lessons are hands-on. They, um, in this particular lesson, they, um, drew alligator teeth with the computer, so that had, had figured that out. And then they watched a video about how coding affects digital music. So it's, um, across a lot of curriculums and she's found a lot of success with that. So hopefully maybe some other students, um, around the district will be able to benefit from the Hour of Code. And that is Mrs. Nosen, and I appreciate her for bringing that to the district.
And I will just say, awesome. I wish I could have taken the Hour of Code. Uh, we're now to the point of our consent calendar. Action by the Board of Education and the option of the ca, consent calendar means all items appearing with an asterisk are adopted in one single motion. Does anyone have anything they need removed? And I do not believe for once that we had any adjustments or changes or anything, so the consent calendar is as it is. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr., Colonel Evans, second by Mrs. Ludwig. Can you take the roll? Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Grozen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Number seventeen is our second reading of, uh, Board Bylaws and Policies. Uh, we have them available if anybody is suffering from insomnia or wants to read them for any other reason. Um, and we will be voting to adopt them in our next meeting. Uh, number eighteen, Board of Education Other. Does anyone have any Board of Education Other?
I have another.
Jane?
Okay. We've been talking about this. These are the bricks that were at the high school. And much to my dismay, we were not able to find a new purpose for these bricks. I myself had a brick and I now have it at my house. Um, this happens to be the high school PTA brick, but I just wanted to encourage everyone, um, to go and look for their bricks if they know they bought a brick, if they think they may have brought bricks. There is a list that's on the website of all the people that bought bricks. Um, and pick it up. It's a nice little keepsake. I have it on my mantle. So, um, uh, I just wanted to, uh, again, they're only going to be there until the end of March, correct? I think then they're going to pull them out. And there's still quite a few bricks there. I know I took a bunch and took them to the Historical Society because I know a lot of my members had bricks. And so I was passing out bricks at the historical, and they were like, oh, I forgot I even bought this. But, um, so, that's my other visual aids, because I'm big at visual aids.
So, get your bricks.
Get your bricks. I have lots of bricks. I have sarars. I got all the PTA bricks. So all our PTAs generally support our schools all the time.
That's in your purse, Jane?
It did.
I, I have George's, uh, financial bible, so I use that to hold my door down.
Stick us his brick.
Oh, there you go.
Meeting notification, a regular Board of Education meeting, work section, work session will be held Thursday, February second at seven P.M. in this building. Along with February sixteenth is our regular meeting, regular meeting. And that one will be an exciting one, so mark your calendars. That one will be at the Media Center where we get to show off the new Media Center and we're all very excited about that. February sixteenth at seven P.M. We do have reason for executive session, Mr. Reiba?
To consider the employment of a public employee or official.
And negotiations.
We can add that one as well.
And negotiations.
To prepare for negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees.
So moved. Second?
Second.
Motion by Colonel Evans, second by Mrs. Ludwig. George? Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Grozen?
Yes.
Enter an executive session. At nine o'clock and we have no anticipated business afterwards. Thank you for coming. Thank you for your attention and have a lovely evening.